Is that it for the last change order? Okay, then we'll move on. Item number two, change order request and consideration. Other thing comments for the last paper?
Yes.
Yes, question?
Um, I just have a question. We all know that landscapers are usually neighbors. But the curious question of the community is, are prevailing wages being paid on this project?
Yes.
To the landscapers as well?
Yes. Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's Aaron Mari at Sun Landscapes in off of 111 out by Bluey, if you know IBC area, correct? Yeah, absolutely. Aaron is probably in terms of prevailing wage landscaping. He's got 28 men right now, including working in the state of California, Salt Sea, numerous other places. Aaron is in that regard.
I did want to also ask, because we've gone a little bit awkward, but so much has been discussed with the board, but he's the manager. And so aren't these items usually discussed with the manager and then just brought to the solutions to the board? Are they no longer being reviewed?
Do my partners make that?
Just thought it was just interesting that all that is to them. And so it's interesting to look at that and operate.
Someone asked a question.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, that's why it's usually by the project. I just think it's interesting that landscaping is a simple item, it's just. We watch a lot of this.
So moving forward, Tomás.
I.
Thank you.
I don't respond to public comments, but we already had the discussion, but the board can be here.
Okay, moving on to item two, change order request and consideration.
Well, I guess I'll go on. You know, the door, like I said, that's not what I'm talking about. The change was on the south. We got a report maybe in latter April, I don't know if it was May, you know. Part of May, well, we got the report. Couple of in January, in March, I mentioned to you, I was waiting for it. And I need a report in order to figure out what we were going to have to do so they understand. So they reported me. Go through a little bit. It's going to require moving some of the stuff that's going to install. This machine's going to have to move the wall, drive it. Change it to lead shield and cover the door. Get ordered extra door and move it where it's already installed. Basically, that's a lot. Change it up to a little bit seen now, this is a voice, which is working for heaven. That, that's what was mentioned in March.
What happened to the specs before? Because I, I know when we had a walkthrough with Dr. Tyson. He mentioned that the x-ray machine will fit through the front door and the hallway and twelve doors.
We met with him and he said, oh, I put the jump in perfect.
So x-ray and CT different? X-ray machine goes through the doors or in the?
The x-ray machine is actually in.
CT scanner is going to come through the?
The CT scanner, I remember we walked through and you said.
There's, there was a back door that was, was there. That back door that they're talking about.
No, 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 no. There was an opening. Do the walkthrough, you measure or you saw the entrance. You saw the hallway, you saw the door that was going into the CT scan, and you said the machine would fit.
Uh, no, it's the CT scan, no, sir.
Yes, you did?
No, sir. I, I swear to you, no, sir. Because it would have been impossible for me to make that, that statement. Because I don't even know how big the CT scanner is. What I said was, in the back hall, in the CT room, okay, there was an opening. And that opening hadn't even been filled in yet when we had that walkthrough. And I said, the CT scan will definitely fit through this area. That, the, the door I was referring to was the opening that was already open. It was not even, not even constructed closed at that time. So there may have been, there may be misinformation, like maybe a misunderstanding. But, but there, no, there's no way, there's no way a CT scan is going to fit through a door and hallway.
I have a question. So you're talking about the CT scan room, right?
That's in the south.
Okay. And this CT scanner, um, can I give the amount of security benefit? Eighty-three thousand, fifty-five dollars to get that done? That's the door and the frame?
Well, the lead, the, the chipboard that has a lead window, that is part of the project. And the lead door that surrounds all the entire building.
So you're talking about eighty-four thousand dollars?
Why did the lead change? We have specs.
There was, there was, on the original contract, there was no lead that we had. At that time, the equipment that was in the road. We did get some specs later down, later down, later down the road. But that information also changed because there was a change in the equipment. After we got that equipment nailed down, the contract, the installer contractor came on board. They did a walkthrough. We had a, they recommended the providing of that extra door. That's our recommendation. And that report was made now that we had a CT scanner equipment that was going to be installed. Then what happened is the, that information passing over to a medical physicist. Who then is going to repair the shielding report. That shielding report is giving the information of how much pounds per square foot of lead goes into the walls, into the doors and into the windows. That report was provided to, to the contractor. And this is the price of what it takes to actually install that. All of the lead shielding requirements, we then that, we then that to support the CT scan.
So I believe.
A good question. What happened to the, the pricing on the other lead that's going to be installed?
The other, there was another change.
That was already contemplated.
That was, that was for the x-ray equipment.
Not on this one.
It was for the x-ray.
So you never, the same one ever had a specs for the CT scanner? On the lead?
Um, I have another question, sorry. There's another change order, and that's for the set of double, double doors. And we're talking about an additional seventeen thousand dollars. So these two change orders roughly are a hundred thousand dollars each.
Are the double doors lead fed?
You can go with a forty-eight inch wide, forty inch wide.
Why does the, the door width need to be changed?
To get, to get the CT scanner into the room.
So if, so if you're talking about the door at the hallway, then you're not talking about that opening. The CT scanner is not going to that opening. It's going through the front door.
No, it's going through the back door. The back door by the, by the.
The one that doesn't exist yet.
Right.
So, so can you show that back area right there?
So, so it says going to the back door, why do we need to widen the door in the hallway?
You don't need to widen the door in the hallway. They're talking, I think those, that's the area that needs the door right there, right?
Yeah.
Yep. That's where the CT scanner is going to go through. So whatever that used to do, that's all that used to be, you know, my. You don't need to do anything with the hallway.
No, they asked me to, I told them, no. When I, when I talked to you, I think we were talking about the door of the hallway. That is the one that.
Yeah, that's where we bring the CT scanner in. Put the back doors, take those double doors so you can open them, great. So then when we have to move equipment in and out, you know, then we can.
So I mean, when you and I were together, that hallway door that enters that room right there, that door jamb is not there, right? And then, and the door. Doesn't have to be widened, what has to happen is that jamb has, even the door jamb is lead lined. So that door jamb has to be fitted with a lead line to the poundage that every part. And I, I.
Two doors. The door did it in the building, it was at least forty feet. Price for five doors is about the same, which is better to modify it.
Now what door we're talking about?
Okay, you did it in. That's what I did with the door.
I know, I know. But there's another door that enters the scanner. That does have to be changed for eight. Right now, it is three feet.
Why, why does it need to be changed?
Because they said to want the gurney to apply for that over all kinds of things. He said it's got to be, it doesn't have to be what they were widening forty-eight inch.
And then, then, does it have to be?
There's a question.
Now I'm really concerned. Someone said something, someone didn't say something, someone didn't see, someone didn't hear. Now we got door one, now we got door two, we've three. And the concern now is that how much did this project start? And now we having change orders and change orders. At the end of the day, how much of this project is going to end up? But, I mean, it's nonsense. I mean, we got a board and we have a director here that's getting pretty, pretty good money. And, I mean, it seems you guys are not on the same page. There's something wrong, okay?
We have to say a comment. So then, what is the wishes of the board? You're saying that we don't.
The door's not needed.
It's not needed, it is not needed, and we're going to do it.
It's wanted by, with the people, doctors, and we want that, like, door. And maybe I'm wrong.
I didn't, I didn't make, I, for the, for the door coming in, that was not my requirement. You can use a wheelchair to get the CT scanner. My concern, my concern though is, that door needs to be fixed. Because we do need to get the CT scanner into the building.
My understanding, we've not said as a board, we were not going to approve any change orders. That's my understanding, because everything was already calculated and said what needs to be done. And we're talking about an additional one hundred thousand dollars. That.
My only comment, my only comment as a, as a, as a medical professional and somebody who's going to be taking this building over is, if you don't put lead in the walls, I can't put a CT scanner in there and the public's not going to have the CT scanner. I'm not involved with the construction, I'm not involved with the pricing. I'm just making a, a very common sense observation, okay? Those doors need to be done so that we can put the CT, the CT scanner in there. We can then lock it up so we can secure the facility. The CT scan room does need to be finished, okay? And, 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 you know, that's kind of one of my option items. If you want to wait, we can talk about those things. But, you know.
I believe this is from all of the board, included in the package we provided with the change order in the description. We also have, I believe, a letter from Medical Physics Solutions that Sanders solicited to get that resolved, correct?
The, uh, the medical physicist.
And I believe all of you have that report. It would have been included with the change order.
Well, I would just say.
Or no change order.
It's something you point, we knew that the doors needed to be done. The thing is that in the past, when we discussed, we had asked five more change orders. And at the time of the discussion, we weren't known. There was a pending order that they had discussed at some point, whenever the issue, because there was a change in the equipment. So when we first talked about it, you're right. He said no more change orders, and we're going to create one. For the team, the impression team, they felt that that was a pending order because that never sees up out of. It wasn't discussed at our board meeting, we couldn't discuss it. If you want to put a CT scanner, then we will be a place which I'm talking about, right? So right now is whether, the question is, well, we don't need a door for all of us to respond. So what needs to be discussed is, we know that it has to be a medical physicist, uh, business to get done. If you want a report not to change or to install that wall, protect the public and the employees from that. It's a simple yes or no question. And obviously, we can't go back and change more. We said we're going to have a change orders or not. If we don't want to put a CT in there, that's, that's nothing. Is it better to have a CT in there than not? It probably is to serve the public, because we want to see care centers. But it's really the question is, do you need us, do you understand the official report to understand it? That's why they need this door, and I think that's why the change order is there. Whether you want us to report or not, we have to report, but it's not a, the report doesn't mean that it's a requirement. A, we got requirements that we still have. But the thing is that things changed from the time we began this project to now. And initially, you had a CT scanner there. And somewhere along the line, that, that conversation didn't mature and it didn't go anywhere. As to A, we're going to need to put lead in this room, because if that was the case, we wouldn't have a change order way back then with the project restarted. So there have been a lot of change orders. And the thing is, because they have been pursuing, why didn't we catch it in time if they didn't want to? So right now, the problem, it's a problem for you, right? This is, this is something that is what we're at and what we do. And whether you want to address it or not, the CT that happens with it, that is the old one. Once again, eighty-two thousand, twelve thousand, thirty-four thousand dollars to get a change. And, and while we're addressing this, are there going to be any more change orders or is this really the end? I think that's it, it's a fair question.
Do you have a list of the changes?
Yeah, but that, that wouldn't be a shortstop for the owner. The, the sign, we know that it's an issue, we discussed it, but it's not a, not necessarily to move forward and have some signage. But that could be a separate project from the, like, someone's to put it. But to go on and out on like Bluetooth to a car and such stuff, that's pretty much a lot, not a need to get started. The thing is that an urgent care that's going to fund you, it's the next thing to an ER, right? We can't afford an ER, correct? We can't afford hospitals, let's, it's going to fund you. But the emergency care is the next best thing, and you were just, what is it, Ryan, about ninety, ninety percent of ER? Is this how much requires this emergency care? Yeah, and, and, you know, I mean, if we want, we can just go ahead into, I haven't read.
Well, no, we have to decide.
Oh, on this?
But if you want to give information on this issue.
Yeah, let me, I'll give you, I'll give you information on why it's important. Okay. So the, the, the thought is, in, in, in what I want to explain expression to the public, there's different levels of urgent cares, okay? There's level five urgent cares where basically there's a walk-in clinic, right? They don't do a whole lot. You go in, you get cough and cold, and you get a, your, 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 your medication, you go up, right? And then you go all the way up to a level one urgent care. And the level one urgent care is basically a standard over the ER, okay? Now to qualify that, you have to have a CT scan machine, okay? That allows us, okay, a higher level of service when it comes to emergency cases, okay? And being able to provide emergency services. You come in with abdominal pain and I need a rule out appendicitis. You've got a high white count, I need a CT scan or an ultrasound to be able to say, yes, you have appendicitis or no, you don't, okay? If not, then we become a level two urgent care, which is what we have right now in El Centro. Our El Centro location is a level two urgent care. We'll open seven days a week, we'll open twelve hours a day, we provide x-ray services. We have a handheld ultrasound, which I can look at things. But I don't have a formal ultrasound or a CT scan, okay? Those two things for the city of Callexico are huge. Because it's going to save the, the residents having to go to the hospital, ambulance, ambulance to El Centro, or all the way to Brawley, we're talking on these stuff, okay? Having an ultrasound, okay? And, and, and saving costs for, for, for things that, if they rule out, they don't have to go, right? If we can provide those services here, right? Then we're not worried about the ambulance that has to, to, to take somebody all the way to the hospital, wait for a bed, wait to drop them off, and they come all the way back to Callexico when there might be an emergency down the street. Our whole goal is to be able to provide the services that have been missing in this city for a very long time.
Only six years.
Right? And if people really know me, I've been very, very community oriented. We've done everything from helping the wellness center during COVID and, and taking their patients that aren't urgent cares. They had, they had their services to, you know, opening things up on the fairground and paying money to, to be able to take care of patients and putting them up in parking lots so we can see patients, do the whole thing. I want the best that we can provide. I really, really want that. We've done the work, the work's almost there. You know, the finish line is in sight. So if we can get the public what they need, it's going to be more successful than, than, than anything else, I think, that has come out of what, what, what happened and is done. Honest to God.
Mr. Tyson, I have a question for you. How many level one urgent care centers are there in Fairvale?
Zero. Zero. And we are the only level two urgent care in, in, in the entire Imperial County. The other quote urgent cares are level four or level five. They don't offer services, they don't offer pediatric services in two of the locations. They don't offer x-rays, they don't offer ultrasounds, you know, they're not staffed by physicians, you know? I mean, we're talking a big level difference, okay? I don't do primary care. I don't do nephrology. I don't do dermatology. I do emergency medicine. That's what I do. And we hired another doctor, Dr. Berdusco, okay? Family practice trained, but, but, but urgent care trained, because he's been with me now for two years, okay? Did his residency in a, in a very rough place, okay? And he also does not do primary care, he doesn't specialize. He was brought on for Callexico. So we're staffing with, with, with doctors. We're trying to provide that level of care. And man, I mean, you know, Dr. or Mrs. Bernau, I've been chomping at the bit to get this place over. I have been chomping at the bit. Give me the keys, give me what we need, you know? I don't want to go into fall or winter again and not have a facility out here, okay? I, I, I need people to understand. I'm not the, the, the person that's holding this up, guys, okay? I know there's been issues, but it's not my issues, okay? And I don't want people to think that, oh, well, Dr. Tyson is asking for this, or asking for, I haven't asked for anything. All I've asked for is keys. That's all I'm asking for. And I really, I really need the community to understand that. Because we're ready.
I have a question. So I'm sorry that we are in this situation. I thought everything was planned and everything was paid off. But if this needs to be done, the community from Callexico, the underserved community of Callexico needs a CT scan. They need a level one urgent care. Because we don't have nothing, we don't have any hospital here. So that's the best thing that we can have for the community, for our underserved community.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I know that the board, we all agreed that there was not going to be any more change orders. And I know we all agree on that. But I, I think that now that I understand what Dr. Tyson was saying about having a level one urgent care, which is really, really needed in Callexico because of what just, I did everything that Mr. Varenya says. You know, I have changed my mind. I have changed my mind to go ahead and go with this change order. Because it's important, it's something that, that, that will leave here to Callexico, to the residents, because they need it. Especially we have all the seniors of us all around here. They, they're the ones that need it most. And I, I've changed my mind.
I have a question. If this change order is approved, when is the urgent center going to be, urgent center going to be functioning? Because this urgent center was supposed to function, start being open in February. And we're almost in August. And there's, we don't have our urgent center open. If it's not this, it's that, it's whatever. We're, are in August.
I'll have your answer.
No, the other thing that I was just going to comment on.
But I'm on the question that she asked, please answer that.
When is it going to be open if this is approved? Last half year, I mean, what's the answer?
Well, like I was mentioning to you, four months to get the doors.
It's next year.
Okay, but.
I thought we had said, wait, I thought we said we would open the north side first.
Thank you.
The north side, and then we would.
I'm willing, this is what I'm telling you, I'm willing to do. And this is, this is, this is, again, I'm going out on a limb on this, okay? If you can get me, if you can get me, no, if you can get me the certificate of occupancy for the north side, okay, for the north side, we can open as a level two urgent care.
I was thinking on that, for that.
The shade, the, that little shade thing?
I talked about before.
And how fast could we get that shade?
Be there in one second.
Question, that's a question. On the south side, can you operate the south side without the CT scan? Can you operate that, for the building that is done?
I would, I would, I would defer that question to what I'm going to tell you in three. And, and, and the designation, what that site is going to be used for. Is it, would it be functional, semi-functional? It would be semi-functional, would it be fully functional? Absolutely not. But I still believe this, the north side, we can provide urgent care services, just like I do in El Centro. I have four rooms and a procedure room, okay? I've got an x-ray room all on that north side. So that part of the, the, the urgent care can be open, okay? The, the south side is where we're going to have a CT scan machine, two observation rooms, okay? And a couple of more patient rooms, and then you've got the pharmacy, right?
Okay, so then.
That part, that part is different than this part.
So for right now, you can open a level two urgent care center.
I could.
And then once the, the south side is finished, then you'll have a level one center. And you're saying that in two weeks, we're.
So on the landscaping, we're two weeks out. We are less than that in terms of getting the shade clock. Those were the items that were brought to my attention by Chuck Cortez, the city inspector. Then I would need to set up an inspection with himself and the fire marshal. They will both meet with me, incur, meet at that point. Everything is good. I believe that we're working in that direction.
So if you say that by August, we would be ready to open? If it's two weeks? Yep.
Well, we're, is it August, the first week?
Yeah. I, I have a question. So this is totally upsetting because this urgent center is not going to be complete, functioning a hundred percent until December or January. When we talked about this as a board and with you guys a year ago. And you guys said it was going to be open in February. What's going to happen in two weeks? Something else is going to happen. It's, it's ridiculous that we've been waiting this long.
It is.
It is.
But it has nothing to do with Robert Fire here or myself or the doctors. It is products that we need and trying to get.
The door that's going to take you four months to get here.
Yes. The last two weeks, I haven't seen anyone in here. We're not, no, no one.
So, so.
We've come a little late. I'm at any moment. The last two exchanges, we can commit to the views, to do that job. I've been here on Sundays. Not you, but nobody was there. I'm talking about workers to do actually.
I just want to say something.
Right now, we're waiting on this lead stuff. Got the door here.
I just want to, can I, can I say something? The public client does not know this. They're getting fined every single day as a, as a, when are you getting fined?
Right now.
You're not? For every day that you're not completing? You're not getting fined?
It's out of order.
But you got fined, you're getting fined five hundred dollars a day since. Yes, you are.
Yes, you are.
Mr. Behe, please?
You have a liquidity damage.
Mr. Behe?
Are you ready? Want to talk to me? You have a copy. Don't you have a copy of that?
So Mr. Behe, can you clear that? Do you have the one that wrote the?
It's my understanding that there is an agreement that you signed.
Yes, and then came the change order with the plastic. Then came the lead, I don't know, paint. We can't change. We were waiting for this report. The report, the case, the mayor. You're back, that allows us to report. We can't, we can't report. Can't complete, you know, the plastic. They just changed, and I told them in a facial letter, I told you.
There is a letter there that Mr. Behe wrote and you signed that said.
Number one, twenty twenty-three.
Number one, twenty twenty-three, five hundred dollars a day for not being in completion.
But I told you very clearly that.
But that's what the letter says, sir.
It says we will commence with liquidity damage. The liquidity damage is, is out of my control. I cannot get reports, I cannot get materials, or we decide to pass through the building.
Is that so, Mr. Behe?
I don't know. We're going to have to review everything that's been said today concerning his position, our position. And it's not appropriate that you try to. And it's not appropriate that you try to negotiate something on a legal basis in an open meeting. The matter before you is whether or not you're going to consider a, a change order based upon the public policies that were argued before you. Then we'll take care of whatever disagreement we have with that November letter and, and, and the contractor and the engineering team. We'll take care of that, but that shouldn't impact on your decision whether or not you want to follow the recommendations of Dr. Tyson and his proposal to you regarding the south, uh, the north building. And then the south building with this door that you have to make a decision. Now, it's a hundred thousand dollars, but given the magnitude of the investment that you've already made, that's a minimal amount of additional monies for the impact that it's gonna have on your community for fifteen years. Because Dr. Tyson has a lease agreement for five years with two options for two additional five-year periods. So, if you look at a fifteen-year investment of medical services at a grade one, Dr. Tyson, actually?
At a one.
Uh, then, you know, you've done a, a wonderful, uh, project for the community for the next fifteen years. But if you're going to focus on a hundred thousand dollars, and you're gonna focus on a door that in an overall scheme of things is, is really minimal, and then we have to talk to the contractors about liquidated damages, they have arguments that they can make, but we can't sell it.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead, we're gonna go ahead and vote. I think if, if there's no more discussion here, does anybody have any more discussion? Any questions?
So, we are voting just for the, uh, CT scanner?
We are voting for the change order.
What is the change order that pertains to the CT scan of the, the?
For the door.
Right, door? How much? The door number?
One eighty-three, one sixteen.
One is eighty-three, yeah, that we have here, yeah, eighty-three, and the other one is sixteen?
Yes.
Okay, so then, on the floor, we have a change order for eighty-three thousand dollars and one for sixteen thousand dollars.
Sixteen eight.
Sixteen eight, Mr. Viverena?
My only question was, I thought there were two different options. One of those was for that area, and the one in the hallway that we didn't need.
Oh, we didn't need that one?
No, that, that.
So, we don't need that one, is that the sixteen thousand?
No.
No, that's the exterior.
That's in the, that's the exterior, okay.
In the eighty-three.
Sixteen thousand, the exterior.
So, then from there, you would have to do a reduction. So, how much is that reduction?
I'd have to do.
We have two, two, on change orders. Yeah, but is that gonna be eighty-three thousand?
Then we have a amount.
We have to have an amount.
Then table the item.
I would recommend that you consider appropriate subject for reduction in the, uh, say, the other door.
We would call that a credit back.
Okay.
We can do a deducted change order, so the net worth, uh, credit will be back to the debt.
Okay. With that being said, is there a motion on the floor?
I have a question before I vote. Will this be our last change order? Will this be our last change order?
Well, how would I answer? This is not my change order, this is Everett's change order, this is, this is what's needed. I, I don't control that. If you come tomorrow, and you need something done, I'll give you whatever you need. I work for you. I, I work for you. I will give you what everybody needs. Is there a cost?
Mr. Viverena, is there any chance that we can get a couple of the change orders?
Yeah.
Because we don't have it.
And we got it by email. We got it by email.
We always hope for it.
I've got one here.
Yeah, so we can make up.
And we can, we can present it to the board as well.
So, will the people approve, will, will the change and getting credit for what, what is not going to be? And did it do with the hallway?
The hallway and the, uh, the sign.
No, the sign?
That's not, that's not. No, that's a large sixty thousand dollars. Is it?
No, it's pink.
Huh? This, a large sixty thousand dollars. Yeah.
Okay, let me mean, well, just, is it? La mosaña no tiene ahí?
Okay.
So, we have here the seat built for fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. And you wanna go ahead and read it? Then we have, I'll read this one. Electricity contracting monument sign lighting, that one we're not gonna do, right? You have a change order for that, permanent? Five thousand, eight hundred. It's not a change order, it's a change order for, oh, yeah. We're not gonna do that one, right?
Okay.
So, the total on that one is six thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. So, this one we're not doing.
So, can I, can I?
I, I don't have that change order.
He's making up, he wants to be held fair.
So, can I make the recommendation on just that sign, the monument sign thing? If we're not gonna fix it, can we just take it out?
Well, we can erase everything that's on there.
No, 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 then you're gonna install, you're gonna install a, a sign, right? The only thing you're not gonna install is the electricity. Just electricity. The signs won't be there. Okay, because I'm like, I was told, like, you're not doing anything on, like, I'm putting signs up on the building already, so. If you're not gonna do, if they're not gonna do anything for electricity, there's no point in having a monument sign when we're gonna have signs on walls. Well, then it'd be evidence. Okay, you can put your signs up, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine, as long as, as long, I just wanna make, make sure everybody understands that. Because if they're not gonna, I'm not gonna pay for electricity to a sign. Okay. Just wanna make sure, that's not going under my expectations.
This, this, yes, why are we discussing that this, that this whole parade here is gonna be dissolved? Why are we discussing any purchases, any 101 businesses? Once something is dissolved, you don't keep on adding to the expenses. I mean.
We're not dissolved yet.
Well, it's a couple of days, and you have no patience, so it's.
That's right, a couple of days.
Because you can continue, because you can continue with IVHP. But you, but the public don't want it, the citizens don't want it, so you're gonna dissolve.
Why do they don't want it? They don't want it?
I went to you, five percent of the population is not the whole population.
No, and trust me, you, you have it, you know what? I came, I've come, wait, wait, I let you speak for a long time. I've come here to knock on this door, you speak. I did.
It's out of order, out of order.
I, I had to knock on this door twice, and I was terribly, greatly ill. Nobody even answered. No, but twice, twice for the same thing. I had to go to my secretary, and over there, I get.
No, no, she hasn't been read.
So, I'm gonna ask you, if this has already been proposed to resolve it, why keep on adding? Why? I mean, it's like putting a pool in your house, it's gonna be confiscated, really?
We are a very underserved community, that is.
No, that's, those are your words, we're a very well-staffed community. Like, I don't understand, business 101 is you work your way up. You don't put a, 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 let's just say a clinic, what, what is it? Approval phase one, case one?
Well, you're, you're level one.
Clinic level one? At the beginning, you go, you go, what we can't have, and then you work yourself up, that's business. I mean, don't you add anything to a house when you just purchased it? Or you just leave it like that, like how you, kinda like let it degrade? I mean, that's business 101, you build up, you don't build down.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to hear that.
Okay, thank you for your thoughts. Okay, can we go ahead and, you, you need to see the papers? Or we already got the papers, they were sent to you, and, um.
They were not, there is only two, um, change orders that I received by email. Excuse me?
We're not voting on the other.
But I wanna see it.
I'm saying we're not voting.
So, the, the one on the second page is the one that we're not allowed to do anything with. Six thousand, two hundred and thirty-four thousand. The second page, the one for six thousand, two hundred and. And the one with the change order for the scan room, to shake, that one, to do the lead door frame. That one is going to cost eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-seven cents. But you're not going to be doing the hallway, right? We already agreed, so.
The sixty thousand?
Eighty-three. Eighty-three. So, they're not gonna be doing the hallway, so then from there, you will have to get credit for whatever, it's not that. And Mr. and Mr. Viverena is saying that we can go ahead and make the motion with the understanding that.
There's gonna be credit?
There would be a credit. Okay, do I have a motion on the floor, do you sign it? For the change order?
Well, now it's gonna be credit?
He doesn't know that, is the one from the, is the one from the last page that comes out? It's the one for eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-five and forty-seven cents. When that, they're gonna let us know what, how much credit they're gonna give us.
There's a hallway door that now we are not going to install. That will, you'll get a credit back out of that eighty-three thousand.
Do I have a motion on the floor to go ahead and approve the change order?
I made the motion to approve the change order, and, um, with the understanding that we're giving a credit.
There's a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Viverena, always a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye, let's see, come on, level one abstain. Okay, moving on to, uh, Dr. Tyson.